Yeah.
Just saying.
There you go. I hit record, Garth. It's letting me record.
Okay.
Okay, great.
Sorry.
We're probably both recording it.
All right. So we got the notice that you're recording, so, and we'll all do a few introductions in just a moment after I get done with taking, noting who is present. Okay, so, um, let's go ahead and usually Rebecca, we have a room full. Um, I am in San Diego. I'm the planning commission chairperson. And I'm in San Diego. I have a family medical situation that has required me to be away uh for some months now, coming to to a, not an end, but a pause uh here pretty soon. I'll be back in April and May, I'll be back home. So I've been on Zoom uh for, oh gosh, quite a while here now. And uh so anyway, it's nice to meet you in person. And uh we've thought if we want to just go around the table and please say who you are. Uh Hank, let's start with you and then Wanda and then Roy.
Uh, I'm Hank.
And he's a planning commission member.
Yeah.
Wanda?
I am Wanda Holberg and I am a business owner in Urbana and I live there.
And Hank is also a business owner and lives in Urbana. We, I think we all live in Urbana. And Roy, how about you?
I'm Roy. I'm a town employee. I'm the zoning guy and some other things.
Uh huh. Yeah, a lot of other things. He's also, he's also the town employee who is on the planning commission with us. And has extensive experience having been a town, a town administrator and all kinds of other things. So, and Dawn Derayer, how about for you? Just a brief introduction?
I'm Dawn Derayer. I'm a retired teacher from Fairfax County. Uh moved down to this area and loved it and uh I'm a sailor, although I don't have a sailboat right now.
Sad thing, sad thing, a dry sailor. Okay, and Martha?
Yeah, hi, I'm Martha Rodenberg. I am the town clerk. And tech support.
Yes, yeah, yes. And uh and Garth, if you could introduce yourself and then we'll ask Rebecca to a couple of things and then have you give kind of an overview, Garth, okay?
Uh, I'm Garth Wheeler and I'm the town administrator. And uh just happy to be here.
Great, wonderful. Nice to see you, Dawn. Okay.
Our wife fixed me up there.
There you go. Sometimes it takes a team. All right, and Rebecca, if you could uh just introduce yourself and just say who you are at this point. And uh then, and of course, you're our guest speaker this evening, and then Garth is going to give just a little welcome and overview before we hear more directly and you can pull up your presentation, okay?
Sounds good. Um, some of you actually look familiar to me and I know with uh National Main Street, we were in Middle Peninsula working, gosh, I guess this would be about two to two and a half years ago on the small scale production pilot, so I may have met some of you at some meetings out that direction. Not Mary.
What was, what was the small scale production project?
Uh, so, that was around looking at, I think in Middle Peninsula, we were looking specifically at agriculture and some um artisan goods, things that people are making at home that are being grown at home and then value-added production and how can we capitalize on that for the region? Um, that would have been with Matt Wagner with National Main Street and Kyle Meyer headed that up in the Middle Peninsula area as well. So.
Well, I don't know, but it sounds very interesting.
I can look for that study and see where it went and and uh what some of those results were. Uh, my name is Rebecca Rowe. I'm the associate director of the Community Revitalization Office at Virginia Department of Housing and Community Development. I have uh currently four state programs under my purview, Virginia Main Street being one of those, also Community Business Launch, Virginia Individual Development Accounts and the uh Virginia Small Business Resiliency Fund, which makes grants to CDFIs for them to then do technical assistance, make grants, loans and other financial activities for small businesses around the state. Um, until previous, until very recently, I also headed up the Enterprise Zone and Industrial Revitalization Fund programs, but all of our programs are growing, so we are doing some realignment and those are now uh kind of peeled off in a standalone. And I um, I'm not sure what circumstances you all have at home right now, but I have a dog right next to me very noisily chewing a toy, so you're gonna hear that.
Yes, things we've gotten used to with remote work, right? Are, are you still, are you still um remote work or primarily in the office?
Um, we are kind of whatever we want. Um, our agency has grown from approximately a hundred and ten, hundred and twenty people about two years ago to closer to two hundred people now. Uh, primarily because we have the Run Relief Program and the broadband programs as well, so there's a, a lot of money flowing into to broadband in particular right now. Uh, and then we also have some ARPA funds in our programs, so even if they told us to come back to the office tomorrow, they do not have a space for everyone, so they're gonna have to figure that out before we're we're fully back, but we have the luxury of being able to work from home or come into the office really whenever we want to, and just in the last couple of months, we're able to uh routinely get back out on the road, so I was traveling in Shenandoah last week and tomorrow I'll be doing a little Southern Virginia and then Southwest. So um, on the field, out in the field, it was nothing to us.
Uh huh, great, great. Well, thank you for being with us tonight. I just, I want to say that uh this evening, we're primarily, our goals are to uh hear from Rebecca about uh the Main Street uh programs and to consider uh whether that is something that, that we wish to pursue in some way, shape or form. There are a variety of different levels of involvement and that sort of thing. And just to consider as we're thinking about economic development and downtown revitalization, uh you know, we, we don't have to invent the wheel on many, many things, and so, you know, finding some good models or programs that could help us with that could be a wonderful, wonderful thing. And uh I came across Rebecca's information as a result of conversations that I'd had with Roy. I know Roy and I are planning on attending the conference in May. I'll actually be back in Virginia and can attend to the conference, and I sent an email to all of you. I know I heard from uh Dawn that you would not be attending, and I heard from Alana that she would not be attending. I did not hear from Wanda or from Hank, and we can talk about that later. Uh, but let's do talk about that before we finish tonight. Um, the conference and, you know, again, to see more of what is available out there. And um Garth has been great to be with us. Garth and Roy are relatively, well, we're all relatively new. I, uh, this is, I'm into my second year as an elected town council member. And uh, we hired Garth and Roy within a couple of months after uh beginning, uh beginning our terms in uh January of twenty twenty-one. Uh, we needed professional administrative leadership in the office and uh there was a zoning requirement, there were a number of things. And uh Martha, we needed a clerk that uh clerk had left and so a lot of the progress that we've made in the last couple of years are because of, of these three individuals and the ways in which they have gone about updating and professionalizing and systematizing things in the office so they really work for the town. And with that said, uh I'd like to um ask Garth to uh just kick this off Rebecca, since he is kind of, kind of the leader we're looking to. So Garth, thanks for being with us.
Rebecca, first off, I want to thank you for, for uh taking the time to, to make this presentation and work with the planning commission. Um, that, they have done a remarkable job of, of really stepping up to the plate. And some of our committees in the past have, have been kind of inactive. And, and uh this group has taken this job serious and they're looking forward. I've been at on your website and, and looked, and I'm really impressed with, with what y'all are doing and I think it can really be beneficial to, to our town. You know, we, I don't know how much you know about Urbana, but, but we, we're kind of, and we're actually we make the money, we make a lot of money from Middlesex, but we don't get the credit that we deserve. And, and uh, so after saying that, um, if you, if you look at them, at the map, we, we're a destination. You can't, we're not on the main drag, we're not on Route seventeen or Route thirty-three. And so you have to want to come to Urbana for some reason to, to be here. So what we have decided is that we, we are uh focusing on making Urbana a destination and wanting to, to create things that will, will make people say, hey, we need to go to Urbana. And we've, we've got some, some things that, that we've, we've already got here that we're trying to focus on. We have our own marina that we're very fortunate to have a town marina uh, which is a destination. And I'm proud to say that our marina is making money. Uh, not a whole lot, but it, but, but people are looking and wanting to come here. Uh, buy water. And, you know, wrap a hammock up into the Urbana Creek. And it, it's, it's just a, a great deal of history here. We were formed in, what, sixteen eighty-nine, I believe. And, and uh, so we've got a museum or visitor center that is right up the road from the marina. And you can actually see Urbana Creek. And at one time, the, well, let me back up. The, the museum is actually, we, we've got, we got a grant and we're having an architect that specializes in Scottish factors who used to work for the town of, uh, the city of Williamsburg. And he went out and formed his own uh company. And, and uh we've gotten a grant and had them come in and they are actually studying their Scottish factor. And according to him, he, he will be getting a report from them within the next several weeks as a matter of fact. But he's been here several times and according to him, we have possibly the last full standing Scottish factor store in the country. There are, are several others throughout the country that are partial. Uh, you know, wall standing or windows on display or whatever, but ours is still fully standing and we've turned that into uh a museum that, that uh hosts the John Mitt, uh John Mitchell map, which is one of the original productions of this map from the seventeen hundreds. So, uh, we're, we're trying to, to focus on some of the things that, that, you know, are unique to our town. We also, right now, our pool is closed, but we're in the process of uh rebuilding our pool. And that is, if everything works well, it's supposed to be open Memorial Day of next week and that is.
You mean next year?
Not next year, next year. Yeah, thank you. I'm, I'm being optimistic.
Yeah, that's a little too optimistic.
But anyway, uh, and, and that's another uh thing. We, we are fortunate to be the, uh, to, to have the only pool in the area that is AAU uh meets the AAU standards for competitive swimming. And so with our pool being closed currently, uh, you know, we, we've got a little bit of a disconnect there, but we're trying to fix that. And I'm really proud of, of the volunteers that, that we have. We're so fortunate to have folks in this, this little town of four hundred and fifty that reach out and, and volunteer and, and really make things happen. From gardening to, to uh working in the pool, working on the street to serving on committees like these folks, so um and I'm rambling on here, uh, but, you know, we, we've got a lot going on actually for a little town and, and uh we're just trying to, to focus on what we do have and, and try to, to make us a destination. We don't want to grow and, and become a big city or whatever with, but we do want to be a, a viable quaint community that people want to come to and.
Garth, can I ask you real quickly? The four hundred and fifty residents or four hundred and eighty-three residents, those are full timers. The um, how many part timers do we have? Because we've got a lot of vacation homes, lots of vacation.
And, and Roy, I don't know if you can answer that. I don't know right off the top of my head.
Probably from water billing, you could figure that out. We have a water system, we have our own water system that we operate. Do you have any idea, Roy?
Uh, no. Uh, I would say that we have as many part-time residents as we do full-time.
I, I would think so.
Because, you know, we've got all the condominiums down at all over the place.
And, and you know, I'm, I, I'd be remiss if I didn't mention, you know, the restaurants. We have got some fabulous restaurants here, and again, they.
Seven. We have seven in a one-mile square downtown footprint.
And they have been totally dedicated and, and actually did things thinking out of the box to survive during this COVID and uh epidemic and, and managed to do so.
And we know that, we know that they did well because we have a meals tax and the meals tax is greater than it was when COVID, before COVID, so.
Before, yeah.
And one other, maybe I shouldn't say this, but one other problem we have, we have one restaurant that went out of business. And the reason it went out of business is because the owner decided he wanted to go out of business. It wasn't because you know, there wasn't enough demand for it. He had a pizza place and everybody loved that place and it could get revitalized. We also have one retail store where the woman who had run it for years just died. And her son has no interest in keeping it going, so it is sitting vacant. It's not that it didn't have customers.
Right.
It's just that you don't have a person who is at least willing to run it. We've got another building, the green building, that has a roof problem. Uh buzzards came in and ate up the roof and used that four little shops in it. Uh, it has to have some work done on it, but it's, it's a, a nice building. And then we have a gas station that is just about out of business, uh, that has to be revitalized somehow. There's a dispute between the owner and the guy who leases it. The guy who leases it doesn't have enough money to buy gas. He's just hanging in there, but i- i- it's by thumbnails and it it will be vacant. So we have some property.
And, and we have Emily's Gallery, Emily Don.
Oh, yeah. I forgot that. And another one, right next to our old town hall.
Right.
Building. Uh, the, again, the lady died who had been running it for years and her family didn't want to pick it up. And then, we've got our old town hall. I mean, that's, that's another one.
And, and we have a, a uh uh, but for lack of a better term, it's a, it's a boutique motel that does a good business and, and uh that, that the owners there, they have come here from Northern Virginia and they are totally dedicated to to the community. And I, and I think the overall scheme of things, we are very fortunate to have folks, like I said, the volunteers and the business owners that are dedicated to our community. And one of the things that we are lacking is, is uh, we, we had a, a uh uh Urbana Business Association.
Right.
And, and that, they need to be revitalized. It was a chamber of commerce and for whatever reason, uh, that went by the wayside and.
Long time ago.
Urbana Business Association and the, the, the guy that has been running that has, has uh gotten cancer and is not able to continue on and and uh, so we're, we're, bottom line is, is we are a, a community that is made up of, of older citizens. Senior citizens, more senior citizens and, and uh, that's a wonderful thing. Uh, and, but it, it also kind of hurts us.
Yeah, so is there anything that someone else would like quickly to say about our town? Just so that Rebecca has some idea of why we're interested in talking with her.
Well, I think the town has a lot to offer between the history, the waterfront, which we need to really play up. Because that's a big draw to lots of other towns. But we don't have public access to the water.
Yeah, right.
Go ahead.
Hank?
Um, you know, we had a bed and breakfast here. They, I don't know why they closed, but they closed and sold the real estate. But the, the ten-room motel we have here has increased their bookings consistently because of the redecoration and the marketing. And now they, they stay full pretty much all the time. We have several VRVOs and several um Airbnbs in town, but I think there's a, a real need for other lodging here. But we want to become a destination and bring some of those earth dollars in. That's becoming a mega destination. We want to stay up right now. Um, I understand Mr. Mullins has sold his marinas and they're supposed to close tomorrow from what I understand.
Uh, the thirtieth, I think.
The thirtieth, okay. But I understand that the new owner wants to make it back into a full-service marina. Um, hauling boats.
I, I actually met with him uh last week and he is uh opening, he, he planned, he's already got a mechanic and he's planning on opening a full-service marina, which we desperately need.
We do.
Yeah, and I've actually talked to the mechanic about.
Oh, yeah.
On the board, so. But um, there's just an awful lot of opportunity. The drugstore here um has a lunch counter. I don't know if they're gonna reopen that or not.
Yeah.
Covid. Um, so in addition to the seven restaurants we've got and the eight that's makeup, you know, there's also the lunch counter, the drugstore.
Yeah.
Um, with uh, with the Scottish store, the, the museum, the um the Blue Water Trail or the trails, the.
Blue Water History Trail that we're in progress.
I left that out.
Ours will be unique. It has a geolocations of uh historic uh sites throughout Urbana Creek because Urbana was one of the very earliest tobacco ports in the colonies. And um, and it was a thriving, thriving uh waterfront town, oystering, uh fisheries, tomato cannery, that sort of thing until about nineteen sixty-five, and it's been a steady decrease since that time. Uh, in the, you know, the number of um uh businesses that we have. It's been on a stead, steady decrease since that time. So we see, we see the possibility of making our small town, which is surrounded by um residential areas and agricultural areas in Middlesex County, so we're not, you know, our town borders are very small and so there's only so much we could do in our town borders, but we're in, in need of revitalization and a more breadth of economic development. Uh, at this time, Dawn, do you want to say any, anything more before we turn it over to Rebecca? She's been listening for longer, longer than I'd anticipated, but uh, is there anything that you would like to say about?
The, the only thing, and I, I don't know if this really matters, it's important to me that we, historically, we have not had a, a, an overly positive working relationship with the county. And we have been really working hard on that.
Yeah.
And, and uh, we've had several meetings with the, the county administrator, the county administrator and our personal friends. And, and we've got uh newly elected officials on the board uh that represent us, so we're, we really want to, to focus on building that relationship and, and having them realize the importance of Urbana. So.
And you know, once, once a year, we have a great big oyster fest.
Yes.
I've heard of it.
Attracts forty thousand.
And I left that out.
Well, I would say that um, your reputa- reputation precedes you in terms of the oyster festival. It needs no introduction. Um, I, I definitely want to get into, to Main Street a little bit. I wanted to ask
Yeah, me too.
The businesses that um, the owners have, have died or otherwise simply stopped operating them. Is there any mechanism or has any conversation happened around selling those businesses?
Hmm, as a business?
Yeah.
I believe, I believe that there were some. I, I believe that there have been some conversations. I don't think that the town has been involved in having those conversations. Has the town, Garth?
Not really.
No, I think it's, it's all just been informal. Yeah.
The, the only one that we have been involved in at all is the green building that has the roof, the buzzing stuff off. Uh, I was contacted as to what they could do with that building, because it, we have a historic area and you can't just do anything, but what these people were planning on doing would fit in very nicely, so. But that's the only one I know.
I am a recovering historic district planner, so I completely understand um administering design guidelines and, and having to tell property owners and business owners yes and no, and I will never do that again in my whole life. Main Street is way more fun, so I am gonna go ahead and share my screen and start, you know, telling you about Main Street. I will say, uh, I'm, I'm going to move as quickly as I can. If you all want to have a safe word, something that tells me to move along, feel free, but if you have any questions, also feel free to interrupt me and ask your questions. And now I need to figure out all of my tabs here, share my screen. Zoom is different than Google Meet.
There you are.
There you go.
There you go.
All right.
There was one more thing that I wanted to say. What, she disappeared.
I'm here. She's, she's still there.
All right. Um, the, I think it's important that we try and bring young families back into the town. Because we had, this town was loaded with them when I was growing up and now there's hardly any. I couldn't even find a teenager to move a couch. I mean, that's.
Yeah.
I don't have a teenager, but I have a husband if you need him to come move your couch. So how many of you are familiar with uh St. Paul, Virginia? how many of you are familiar with uh St. Paul, Virginia?
Not at all.
Not at all. So this thriving metropolis compared to Urbana, this is a population of about nine eighty full time, so approximately double Urbana's size, but it is the smallest designated Main Street community in our program. They are in far southwest Virginia. So you'd wanna head south on eighty-one if you um when you hit Tennessee, take a right. If you hit Kentucky, went too far, turn around and come back, and that's how you get to St. Paul. Also, off the beaten trail, it is not on a highway. It is a destination. You have to be going to St. Paul on purpose to get there. But you know, this is a small community and they are probably one of our most successful Main Street programs. There's definitely a reason that we start presentations um by talking about what they have experienced there. St. Paul was a coal um camp town historically, and we all know what's happened to the coal industry over the last um several years. And about fifteen years or so ago, when I first started giving this presentation, I would say ten years ago, but you know, just moving that forward in time, I think it was about fifteen years ago. Um, their community really started looking around and saying, so what what's next for us? What do we have that we can capitalize on, much like you all are thinking about the things that you can capitalize on? And they weren't looking to the past to regain any kind of past glory. They they wanted to think forward and become something new rather than taking some steps back. And much like you, they wanted to become a a destination and really take advantage of those natural assets that they have. They have the Spearhead Trails, they have the Clinch River. Um, and so they have a really strong uh outdoor recreation activity in that area. Now my dog is gonna start talking to me. So um they did some studies, they did some plans, they took a look around. And one of the things that they knew they needed to do if they wanted to have um be a destination was they needed a hotel. So we provided them through Virginia Main Street with a grant to take a look at this building and see whether or not they had the market for a hotel. And if they did, would this building make a good hotel? And that study showed that both of those things um could happen. So now we have the Western Front Hotel down in St. Paul. I'm not sure off the top of my head how many rooms it has, but you can rent ATVs right at the hotel. And one of the best things this town did was uh passing an ordinance that you can ride these ATVs on certain roads in the town. So essentially getting from the hotel up to the trails, back down and over to where you you have to clean them off. But so now that's become a really a big boon for their industry tourism industry in St. Paul. They also did a community business launch program, which is something that is kind of a companion to Virginia Main Street. And it is a grant provided to units of local government or nonprofits that uh does six to eight weeks of small business training classes and then culminates in a business plan competition, kind of Shark Tank style, and then grants directly to the business owners to help them open their businesses. And I'm just gonna give a very high level overview of all of this stuff since we don't really have time to go deep, but St. Paul opened a number of businesses as a result of that. They now have a brewery, they have the hotel, they um have several restaurants, bakeries, they have an outfitter that serves both the Spearhead Trails and the Clinch River. And um the they are also in the process of renovating a historic theater in their district. And they have pulled together all of the grant funds that they need for that. So Main Street is at its heart, an asset-based economic development program. Though it was really started around a historic preservation ethic by the National Trust for Historic Preservation. So one thing that differentiates Main Street from a Chamber of Commerce is that this is really a grassroots revitalization strategy, rather than it coming from the unit of local government or the Chamber of Commerce and being membership-driven or being top-down, it's really built to be from the bottom up. It should come from um the citizens and the community in Urbana. Some outcomes that we would want to see from a Main Street effort, utilizing your historic assets, public-private partnerships, because really nothing happens without those partnerships. Uh preserving and creating jobs. This program has a very strong track record of, I'm sorry, that is the sound my phone makes. I'm gonna turn that down. That is, we have a very strong of preserving and creating jobs and businesses um around the state. Increasing tax revenue, of course, the more uh businesses you have, the more you are getting um the meals tax revenue, you're getting the uh sales tax, you're getting the um hotel motel tax as well as increases in property values, so increases in your real estate tax um revenue. Community pride, vibrancy, regional allure, a sense of place. So you know, when we're talking about all of those things, we want people to be really proud of coming from Urbana. And we want Urbana to be uniquely itself. We are not trying to recreate Gloucester, recreate Tappahannock, or recreate St. Paul in Urbana, but really to have it be itself. So around the state, and I'm looking at this map, this may be a little out of date, it is. I don't see our eastern communities on this state. Um, last year, no, I'm sorry, twenty twenty, we added Tazewell, Tappahannock, Cape Charles, and a Nantucket to the Virginia Main Street designated communities. So we're right about thirty now. And then we have about ninety um commercial district affiliates. And a few years ago, we introduced um what was historically called the Virginia Downtown tier, but we're gonna talk about the tiers a little later, but you can see that um we we really cover the state in terms of the communities that we work in. So these are some uh cumulative numbers for the state program, all of the designated communities. Um, only the designated communities, not the commercial district affiliates, because we don't track their economic data. But in the designated communities, we have ratios of sixteen dollars of private investment for every one dollar of public investment. Four hundred and six million dollars total private investment. And again, this is just over the past five years for um these twenty-six communities is what these numbers are on. Eight hundred and fifty-eight net businesses and over thirty-five hundred jobs in those districts. So the Main Street approach uh is built on organization, design, economic vitality and promotion. Those four components really working in concert. And think about organization as the sense of ownership. So this is the community effort and the ownership of that effort, creating the organization, creating the work plan and doing the work of revitalizing Urbana. Design gives us the sense of place, so thinking about what the community looks like. Do we have the amenities that we need? Are buildings in good repair? Is the garbage being picked up? Um, do we have flowers in the spring and summer and do we have seasonal decorations in the fall and winter kind of thing? Economic vitality, we really want a business in every storefront. We want the lights on, we want the lights on into the evening. We want the cash registers ringing and even better if those are homegrown, locally owned and operated businesses. We're not trying to bring a Starbucks or a Ben and Jerry's or a Chick-fil-A to your town. We do want to help you find who in your town is roasting coffee in their garage and we can move them into a storefront. Who in your community is making ice cream and we can connect them with um agricultural producers in the area and give them, get them into a storefront and have them start creating jobs. And then when you have that really great local coffee shop and you have that really great local ice cream shop, those are other things that attract people to drive out to Urbana. I I know people who do drive to Cape Charles for that Brown Dog Ice Cream, and I can name the really good ice cream places in every community in this state. Maybe not, but I'm working on that. That's my goal. Um, and then promotion, of course, and the Main Street organization would be promoting itself as the organization, promoting the community as a destination and promoting the individual businesses within the community. And promotions can be events, they can be marketing campaigns, they can be social media campaigns. So there's a lot of different ways to look at promotion. And an even more brief way to think of all of these things coming together, the organization secures your resources and builds that foundation. Design is heritage and aesthetics, economic vitality is strong businesses. It's really great to have ribbon cuttings. It's even better to have anniversary parties for your small businesses because we like to see them open and stay open. And promotion is building the buzz. So when we look at these four points for the Main Street approach and then we take, go through the activities of doing a community visioning, looking at the community assets and then pairing all of that with a strong market understanding that ties across those four points to become what National Main Street refers to as a transformation strategy. But it's really just, you know, thinking about your market position and who Urbana is, where Urbana wants to go. And then what is the strategy? What is the, what is going to tie it all together to help us get there? And there we would look at um determining that strategy with you, thinking about what the qualitative and quantitative outcomes are. How do we know we're successful? And maybe that's just that we see more um young families out on the streets. We see more young families buying homes and living there full-time. We see the businesses changing hands, the restaurant reopening. We see tax revenues going up. So some of that is qualitative and some of that is quantitative. And then thinking about the implementation of that strategy and of those plans so that we are actually completing the activities and and moving those initiatives forward. So how this all looked in Lexington a number of years ago, they held a number of community forums um both downtown and and within the region to really hear from the community about what they wanted to see in the district, what kind of businesses they wanted to see, what was there, what wasn't there and and so on. So that would be hearing things like, we want to see more young families, we want to have more businesses, but we don't want to to grow and feel urban at all. We want to keep our character. Might be some of the things you would hear there. Um, at the same time that you do the community vision, you can also do that asset mapping. And I think you all got a really good start on that today, telling me about the museum, the pool, um the marina and all of the restaurants and the small businesses that you have. So we all are already starting to put that asset map together. So taking those.
We lost you.
Now, we still have her presentation, so I'm thinking we didn't totally lose her. Garth, you might wanna be on the lookout to see if she tries to come back in.
One challenge we got, um, looking at these places that she's talking about, because I've seen a lot of the development. Even in the middle peninsula, we have a much smaller business footprint. And that's gonna be a challenge to not get too much of the same thing, you know, to make it of variety.
Okay, so she, I think she left, she'll come back in, I'm sure. So we can just, we can just wait. Uh, it's a pretty, pretty interesting approach though, isn't it?
I am, I am amazed.
Me too.
And I'm gonna tell you, there she is.
There she is. We knew you'd come back, Rebecca.
I know. It happens to all of us, right?
Yes, it does.
Apparently I dropped my internet connection, but now it's back.
It happens. It happens. You'll have to make her a co-host again, I think. Oh, no, she's already doing it. Okay, there you go. Oh, you think your dog made it happen?
Well, I I think he's uh, he's been pretty good over here, but now he'll probably start making some horrible noises next, just to really
round it all out.
Presentation for me. So pulling the the tapestry market segmentation data, it would give us um, you know, where your demographics fall within these different market segments, who they are, what their buying power is, where they like to spend their money. Because we may hear from people that they want a sporting goods store, but then when you take a closer look at some of your market segmentation data, there's a difference between having an REI in your community and having a Bass Pro Shop in your community. You're going to have a homegrown um sporting goods store, what are those different lines that they should be carrying? And some of that is going to be based on um who is living in the community. It's a little different when you um are a community that's kind of part full-time and part part-time and have so many people coming in. So there we would need to do a little more survey work and really figure out who all is coming to stay there as well. So some different examples of transformation strategies um might include arts, college town, health and wellness. But we're gonna talk about tourists and tourism because it sounds like that's where y'all are going a little bit. And look at that, that's what I have slides ready for. So if you were working a Main Street program in Urbana and tourism was one of your transformation strategies, your design committee might be looking at putting a wayfinding system together so that when I get off the highway out there, I can find my way to downtown. I can find the parking, I can find the restrooms, I can find the marina, I can find whatever I'm looking for. And then at the same time, once I find those things and I get out of the car as now a pedestrian walking around, also can I find everything that I'm looking for? Um, your organization committee might put a regional tourism coalition together to make sure that y'all are partnering with West Point and partnering with Tappahannock and partnering with Saluda and Gloucester so that if someone is coming to Middle Peninsula for a long weekend, they can hit all of the different localities. Promotions, developing a local guide to attractions, and then economic vitality committee might be doing a visitor intercept survey to to see how y'all are doing and what everyone thinks. So in Lexington, again, you know, they set three transformation strategies for themselves, which is pretty ambitious. We recommend um two, generally speaking. But they wanted to see more people living downtown, so Lexington is bustling with people living downtown. They wanted to be an arts and technology hub and they wanted to be a destination for days-long adventures, so essentially tourism. And then if you look at the bottom of each of these, it says, what do you think? Tell us how you think we can make this happen. So they were always in communication with the community. Tell us, tell us what you think. Tell us how you want to be involved with us and how we can do these things in Lexington. And this is what they did in Lexington. So they, to really promote the opportunities for living downtown, they did an upstairs and underground walking tour of um living spaces in downtown Lexington because everyone likes to see how everyone else lives. You know, they wanna see behind those closed doors. And so they actually made money from this event and they also showed some vacant spaces that were then purchased and now they have additional living spaces in their downtown. They started the collaboratory Maker Space and Business Incubator, had a Glowforge machine and a three D printer. And you know, folks can have a membership to that facility and come use that to use all of the equipment. They would hold classes there and that was a very successful operation for them. And then they also put a program together, working with all of their merchants called Destination Retail and training all of the merchants on um what they could do individually and collectively to help bring tourists to the district and keep them there. So these are just a couple of ideas around um looking at those reinvestment statistics and measuring your progress around tourism. And in terms of organization, if you were going to get a Main Street effort up and running, this is generally what it looks like. Um, you have that Board of Directors, um Executive Director and Support Staff. I would say that the vast majority of our programs have one paid staff member. Um, only a few very successful communities have support staff in addition. And then a committee structure under that, that can be organized around the four points, but that can also be organized around various activities that you're doing. So Harrison Burke, um, under organization, they did an idea incubator similar to what we saw Lexington do. But they had a big vacant space, they set up multiple stations around the room. So there were multiple ways that you could um provide feedback, provide new ideas. They had pictures that, you know, people could put dots on if they really liked it. They had a spot where you could fill in a Mad Libs about your community. They had another place where um the kids could play. So the kids were entertained as well and they fed people pizza and ice cream that were donated by local businesses because if you feed them, they will come and they will tell you what they think. Because if you feed them, they will come and they will tell you what they think and what they want to see. So in Croze, they actually received a grant from us and put a strategic plan together for their um downtown initiative. And that's something that we can also help communities with. In Farmville, they did a social media campaign called Why I Serve with all of their board members that generated um, generated interest in both the organization itself as well as, you know, really telling the story of why this is an important initiative for the community. Also, under organization, we talked about the organization committee's role is to find the resources. And this is the annual report for um the Lynchburg Main Street Program. And you can see, they have worked very hard to find different ways to generate revenue for that organization so that they aren't just fundraising all the time. Uh, design projects in Culpeper, a building came down because of the earthquake that we had in Virginia a number of years ago. And rather than just leaving a vacant space, they turned that into a community park where you can see movies on the weekends. They're at the back on that white wall, they show movies. Um, you might see people doing yoga in the park. I have seen, there is a pet store in the area that does dog training classes in this park. So it's a great area for for the community to gather. In Marion, um, this is actually an alleyway between some parking off of Main Street and then bringing people onto Main Street. But if you can make your alleyways look like this, no one feels like they're in an alley. And generally speaking, when I'm in Marion, there are people um in this area having senior pictures taken or prom pictures or or what have you. There's a lot of photography happening here and especially with those love letters signs. Gloucester, um, their Main Street program was tasked with doing a gateway project. So they have signage, they have banners. And Gloucester, of course, is the uh Daffodil capital of the world. So they have lots of daffodils out there as well. Then in Bristol, uh, they recently completed a wayfinding projects because that is a larger district and people are coming in off the highway and they want to find their way around town. And these kinds of signs certainly help people do that. In terms of economic vitality, this is Withville's Business Incentive Guide. And they actually are contracted by the town to act as a first stop shop for um people who are coming into downtown Withville and want to start a business or want to buy a building. Um, Downtown Withville, Inc. helps guide them through that process. And this is just a part of their incentives package that and and information for their recruitment in that area. In Danville, they also utilized a community business launch grant. And I think they're on their third or fourth round of um business launch programming at this point. But they have opened a number of small businesses that are very successful. The woman there holding the two checks, she pitched two different businesses and her business plans both won. Um, I have personally been to the Grizzlies Axe Throwing and thrown axes there. Uh, she also has River City Escape Rooms, that one, I don't understand that trend. There are a few things that appeal to me less than being locked in a room. So um, but those are, you know, businesses that bring people into Danville that they they want to come do. And they have seen a lot of storefronts um fill up as a result of that program. In South Boston, they also went through a community business launch. But rather than just continuing to do business plan competitions, they have put some resources around keeping those entrepreneurs in business and making sure that they have a very strong base. And, you know, I was asking about the businesses and whether or not um there were any buyers for those. A strong Main Street program, like in South Boston, they knew that they had a coffee shop that was about to fail. Though those owners were not really doing a great job with that business. But that coffee shop was really essential to their downtown district. So they went and helped to find new new owners for the business so that South Boston would not lose their downtown locally owned coffee shop. So that's another thing that a Main Street program can help you do. Because it shouldn't be all about the town doing it or your volunteers doing it. But a Main Street program um being able to to fill that space as well. Manassas, their Main Street program operates a coworking space up there in Northern Virginia. For promotions in Fredericksburg, they have done a full branding campaign. Their slogan is forever revolutionary. And they now have logos and the banners and and everything really promoting the district. Stanton Knights, their organization partnered with their retailers. So that once a month, there was a different, like First Fridays kind of programming that really brought the community out and into the businesses. And this is one that they did around having uh kids put together, let's call them creative Christmas trees that around the holiday season that really brought a lot of people out. And then very simple in Blackstone, they did a sandwich sampler competition. I mean, again, Blackstone is not a huge community, but all of their restaurants participated. And the winning sandwich was an ice cream sandwich, as it should be, because that's the best kind of sandwich. It was just a very simple, very simply put together program that was very successful in bringing people downtown and getting them into the restaurants. A much bigger production, Ashland, Virginia, of course, um has the railroad tracks right through the middle of their town. Rather than fight it, you just embrace it and and have an Ashland train day. So this is a little more information about our tiered system that I mentioned. Um, we have Exploring Main Street, which is really kind of an introductory level to Main Street. There is an application process, it's non-competitive, there's no deadline. So whenever someone is interested, they can apply for that. Um, the application really is just asking you to put a geography around where you are going to focus your Main Street efforts. Um, let us know what uh kind of efforts you have already completed for revitalization and let us know what you want to get out of a Main Street program. And that's essentially all you need to do on that application. And then that does open up a uh seven grants of up to $7,000. Now, that's a small pot of funds, $35,000 for the whole state, so $7,000. So that's about five grants, generally speaking, that we have for that um tier of participation. But you also have access to all of our training, um, which is more than just the national conference. We have a big training archive on our websites as well as anything that we're doing in the future. Um, mobilizing Main Street, that is a level between exploring and designated that is really for um, it's kind of an accelerator program. So if we've had a community that's been in Exploring Main Street for a little while and they're really ready to get going and pour some gas on this thing, then we would put them in the mobilizing um tier of participation. And that also keeps that same level of grant potential for them as well as a a real training program and curriculum meant to take them to the next level. And then there's um designated Virginia Main Streets, or we also call that the advancing Main Street level, which is a competitive application process that we do every two to four years, depending on our resources internally. And then that also brings with it the opportunity to be accredited by National Main Street at the national level. There are more grants at that level and they are a higher dollar amount, so up to $25,000 there. And then every um winter, we get all of the the executive directors or program managers for the designated programs together in one place and do a director's retreat of approximately two to three days of professional development and training. And they, we really have a very dynamic network of executive directors around the state that are always talking to each other. So if someone is having a problem in Winchester, they crowdsource that and the answer might come to them from Franklin or it might come to them from Fredericksburg. So it's a pretty tight-knit group of communities and directors that are always sharing resources. And I was going to promote the conference, but it sounds like Mary has already been promoting the conference, so I really appreciate that. Um, Richmond, Virginia, May 16th through the 18th. I'll also mention that as a part of that conference, um, there are some mobile tours. And there's one mobile tour that goes to Culpeper and one that's going to Orange. And those are, Orange might be a a nice place to go visit. They are not really very tourist driven, but it is a smaller community that has a really nice story to tell. So if you all were thinking about going to the conference, you might want to think about going on one of those um regional mobile tours as well to really put your eyes on another Main Street community and hear their story and how they have been doing the Main Street work. And those are our websites. Oh, and this is a really old slide, we are not doing downtown intersections in Lynchburg in 2019, we already did that. So I'm going to stop sharing my screen so that I can see you all a little better. Stop share, there we go.
Rebecca?
Oh, I went six minutes over.
No, and I don't think that we can adjust, we want to make most of your time as a resource.
I, I, I gotta tell you, I was really impressed and I'm familiar with several of the Ashland, uh Withville, Danville. And they, they are uh towns or cities that were truly suffering.
Yeah, yeah.
And I'm impressed with with what they've done. And 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 Ashland in particular, there, they are focusing on what is is special to them, which is the railroad. Which, that, you know, that's an idea for us. I mean, you know, we, we should be focusing on Air Creek.
Yes, because that is, that is special.
You know, in St. Paul, they do a big festival every year called Clinch River Days. And theirs is a full weekend and they do all kinds of activities out on that river. Um, canoe competitions and fishing competitions and yeah, it's all about the river. So it is, you know, very much with Main Street, what makes you special and and let's take it all away.
Yeah, I just, I wanted to thank Rebecca, that was a great presentation. I grew up in Blackstone, Virginia, I'm good friends with Mayor Billy Colburn and related to about half the town. My dad's people from Lake Charles, Virginia, I'm related to practically everybody at Lake Charles. What was all the uh town council? Two great um areas that have really. Uh, recently moved from Charlottesville, very familiar with Orange and Croze, uh great pizza and Croze pizza.
Yeah, Croze pizza.
Mary, you know, my vote is, let's go for the Main Street program because uh it's just an awful lot to offer. And I know that we're not the size of some of those towns, but.
I'd actually like to ask about a town that is nearby and maybe, maybe more similar size-wise to us, not as far as assets. But I'm very intrigued, I think you said that Kaleo is at the, are they at the Exploring Main Street level?
I don't think I mentioned, is it Kaleo? I, I wanted to hear how you all said it before I said Calia. I'm not sure.
Oh, okay.
Their level of participation is. We've been working in Colonial Beach a fair amount recently. Um, we've been in West Point a little bit, Tappahannock was just designated in 2020 and an Anco.
Yeah.
Same size as we are, uh probably, even though we've probably got an older population.
Yeah.
I, I was just in contact with the uh uh town manager and an Anco. Uh, scheduled meeting with him next week.
Good.
But um, you, you, you know, it, it, it's funny. Some of these places, they, they were in serious trouble.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
And and they've come around.
Yes.
And I will say, you know, for me, St. Paul is that really great story because this is a program that is clearly working in a community of fewer than 1,000 people. But this is also a program that did not work in the city of Richmond. So I will tell you that it frequently doesn't have anything to do with your resources, whether they're financial or your built assets. What it really comes down to is the energy and willingness of the people to do the work. So we can bring all manner of resources to Urbana. But if we are only, if you all are only thinking about it and talking about it and doing it when we're in front of you, which is something we experience in some communities. And then we go back to Richmond or we go back to Kinsale or we go back to Farmville or wherever we live, um. You know, it.
Yeah.
It, it's a proven strategy, but it really lives and dies by the people who are working the program locally.
Well, and 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 I'm, it, you know, maybe, maybe I'm being overly optimistic. But I, I am just so amazed with the, the amount of volunteerism and and the folks in this town that some of them aren't even full-time residents. You know, they live part-time in Richmond or somewhere else and and part-time here. But we have an incredible volunteer base. And and we wouldn't be able to accomplish what we accomplish if we didn't have that. So I think we're ahead of the game. We just need some direction.
We need some direction, some structure, some organization and some uh uh I'm resources. And I'm saying that not just in an economic sense, I'm saying in terms of resources for doing the kind of analysis and the kind of targeted planning and those kinds, those kinds of things. I think that getting people together with ideas and that kind of visioning. And I do assets-based work all the time, Rebecca. So I, it's fun to see, to see that that's the approach that you take on that. Um, I, it, you know, I think, I just thought it was very, very exciting. So um, I don't know, Wanda or Roy or Dawn, do you have questions for Rebecca?
On, on, on the national, not the national, the conference in May. Mary and I have signed up as, I guess, civic leaders. And we were kind of only planning on participating on Saturday and Sunday. Is that worthwhile for us? I mean, when I looked at the, the agenda, it looked like there was some pretty heavy other expensive training going on there. Is it worth us going?
So Saturday and Sunday are primarily tour days. And the tours are an additional fee from just the registration fee. The conference, really in terms of content and sessions, really kicks off on Monday.
Okay, I thought it was just the opposite.
Monday through Wednesday is where really the, the bulk of the programming is. Uh, let's see, I have.
Which, by the way, Roy, I could do, I don't know if you can. Uh, yeah, I, I found it actually, the um, the conference site, the information about what was happening on what day is very confusing.
Okay. That is a good note.
That's why I asked the question.
Yeah.
And, and, you know, we can review the individual sections on Monday, Tuesday and Wednesday. But that's kind of what, when I was looking at it, it looked like, to me, that's, for us, that's where it would be more beneficial.
I agree, Roy, I agree.
Other than just going there to network with people, which is valuable, but um, that's, that's.
So on Saturday, they're doing the leader, Saturday and Sunday, they're doing the leadership development workshops. That is a, a separate charge. And then there are some tours happening on Saturday and Sunday as well, the welcome reception on Sunday night. And then it's really Monday that, that the sessions.
So it's Monday?
We're too premature for the leadership development.
Yeah.
I don't know about that, Roy. I, I think maybe uh, may- maybe at least Mary, somebody ought to attend that.
And I will say that the, the leadership development, it's, it's kind of general leadership development and it's part of a companion piece for, um, the Main Street America Institute for Local Directors. Um, so it's not Main Street specific leadership. It's a professional development that they offer to local directors at.
On leadership. Okay.
Yeah. So I dropped two links into the chat box here. The first is the schedule. And then the second is, excuse me, on registration, but if you scroll down on the registration, you'll see those, those tours. The mobile workshops, they're calling them.
Yeah.
Go to Culpeper, Orange, looks like most of those are Sunday and then into Monday. So yeah, it may be that um, Saturday is just that leadership development. And then I know there's, um, coordinators things going on for the state coordinating programs, but again, that's staff only kind of stuff.
What is Monday? See, I don't really see anything about Monday. I see Saturday, Sunday. I see. Yeah, I, I just don't, I don't see it. That's part of why I was confused. I was working quickly, so it could be my fault.
Scroll down on the screen from Saturday and Sunday?
Um, okay. On which of the two links?
The second link, first link. I'm sorry, the first link.
First link? Okay, let me go back to that. Oh, I see. Uh huh.
And then even within that Monday, there's a slider there on the side that takes you through the whole. Yeah, you know, God help me. I missed just a nice printed document.
Yeah, I know. I am so adjusted to that too. Now, oh, there is a, a download. So is it just Monday then? That it has the workshops?
In terms of the mobile workshops?
No, Monday, May 16th.
All of the different workshops. And there's Tuesday, May 17th, and then Wednesday, May 18th.
Okay. I don't, yeah, and I don't see that at all. I don't see Tuesday or Wednesday on my version. All I see is Monday.
I, I, I've looked at it. That's why I asked the question. And it looked like the things that we were trying to be interested in are Monday, you know.
Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Roy?
Yeah, but.
Okay.
So can you all see this?
It's Saturday.
Let me go back.
There's Saturday and Sunday.
Right.
Yeah.
Here's Monday.
Yeah, that's right.
And then within Monday, we can even.
Okay.
So there's a session on Monday called, I'm a new director now what?
Okay. Mary, I just posted the link to that page in the chat.
Thank you, Martha.
Thank you.
Was it, the, the link that I posted didn't?
Scroll down, yeah. No, the, the link, the link worked, but on, on my view, on my iPad where I'm looking at it, it, I couldn't get to Tuesday.
Okay.
Yeah, I could only see Monday.
Yeah, so here's Tuesday. And that's.
Okay.
Heart and Soul might be an interesting one. They, that is a an organization that uses their own kind of strategy for this, um, very hardcore community engagement. They, they really spend a lot of time around the community engagement piece.
Okay.
Yeah, I think telling your story and arts and economics would both be really good. They all.
So too. I think so too.
Yeah, there's, so even on these, we, to get all of the detail, we have to select it and then see who the speakers are and.
Right, right. Interesting. Okay.
And then more on Wednesday.
Yeah, so we need to take a look at that. I know I've checked my schedule and I don't, I could be available. That Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday. So I'm good. I don't know if you would still be good for that or not.
Yeah.
Would you? Okay. And I know Gary Lister was, um, really thinking about wanting to, to go as well. And I don't know about Wanda or Hank, whether, you know, they're.
The Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, I don't know. Let me, let me look at the agenda because I do have to be in stamp that next weekend, but we.
Yeah.
So something else that we do as part of the, the national conference every year regardless of where it's held is Tuesday night is, um, what they kind of call the, the state coordinating dinners. So, um, the Virginia coordinating program will put a dinner together at a restaurant or a brewery or somewhere in town. We will get a registration list for the entire conference and we will invite everyone who is registered from Virginia to that dinner. Now, it's Dutch treat. We can't afford to pay for everyone's dinner, but it will be all of your Virginia counterparts in one place. So, you know, um, if you are not running into other Virginians at the conference, it's a great time to know that you're going to see the folks from Anancock and from Tappahannock, from Gloucester and Phoebus, that one.
I have, can I, um, I have.
Sure, Wanda.
And I don't know whether you have, um, Rebecca, done any of this with the Main Street. Um, I know the one in Gloucester, one of the things they did, and I don't know whether this was grant money or how that came about, but, um, they actually gave the businesses grants to restore buildings and they had to rent them out for X amount of time in order to qualify for that money. Um, I happen, we, Steve and I have a very, um, close friend that we've known for decades and he has been very involved in economic development in Richmond. Do you know David Herring?
Yes. Uh, you know, it's been a long time. I knew him when he worked at Better Housing Coalition. Yeah.
Okay, yeah. He's been, anyway, he's a very good friend and we've talked to him about this. Steve talked to him pretty extensively about it. But what he does is he is an expert in tax credit into historic properties. And he does workshops around the state, teaching developers and property owners how to get these tax credits to fix up your buildings. And I think some of the developers in Richmond even sold the tax credits. I mean, I'm not sure how that worked. But, um, he said that if we wanted him to, he would be interested in coming and doing a seminar here. If we had owners and, and buyers or people who were interested in fixing up their properties because our town is a historic district. And, you know, we'd be happy to, you know, I think that would encourage people to fix up these buildings we have sitting vacant, you know? And it's, it's something huge. It's like 30% of some of the buildings. I know in Churchill, it was a 30% of your investment.
Yeah, for the, it's, um, I think 20% federal tax credit and 25% state. When you put those together and you get 45% in a tax credit.
Significant.
Yeah.
Well, we're, we're also looking at, at, uh, we, we've got some funds that we were talking about doing some, uh, grant funding to local businesses.
To the fix up their outside.
Yeah.
Right. Beautification.
And to, to assist them. But our, our, our local businesses, for the most part, haven't been suffering through the COVID. So we, you know, we, we'd just be wanting to revitalize and, and assist them moving forward.
Yeah, well, they, when they didn't, they fixed up the ma, the front of their buildings and stuff like that. But what it does is it encourages the people who are letting their buildings sit empty, you know, what, like even Cindy's Ben. If he.
I know.
Up and got these tax credits in several years, it would be far more desirable.
Absolutely.
And the one that's collapsing, you know?
Yeah, right.
Yeah. And so this is another thing about being involved in Main Street and being connected to the broader network is you will understand very quickly. And I say this with all love, that you're not special. Every other community in Virginia has that problem with building owners, not just in Virginia, but in, in the country. I mean, that is a pervasive problem. Um, so part of then being in the network is hearing what has worked in other communities.
Right.
You know, so, so understanding that you are not alone in your problems and that, you know, some folks, you all may just find that, that you're complaining about those folks together. But then other communities, you may find some real solutions and things that they can do. And I would say around facade grants, facade grants are great, you know, when we talked about the aesthetics and the design and especially if you're trying to attract tourists, having, um, a place that is beautiful is very important. But something that is equally important, maybe more important sometimes for business owners is to provide some grant funding for making energy efficient repairs or updating their HVAC or fixing the roof, something like that, that it isn't even, it doesn't get into the design. But if you can help someone save $500 a month on their HVAC bills, that is potentially the difference between that business owner being in the red or being in the black one month. It might be the difference between them.
So it's sustainability. Yeah. Yeah. Here's, here's what I'd like to do, because I think we could, we could, uh, talk on and on and on with Rebecca about this topic and she's graciously worked, uh, talked with us this evening longer than I'd anticipated. What I would like to do is I would like for us to rethink the purpose of our May 10th, um, Economic Development Workshop, to save the date, to do it, and to think a little bit more about what we want to do with that, whether we want to do an ID, use it as an idea incubator to get people, um, interested and excited, um, or some such thing. And Rebecca, I don't know. I don't know. Um, we were going to use that simply as a, as a kickoff to kind of a first step in uh, coming up with an economic development agenda. And we were in the process of kind of information gathering, which is how I found you. And, uh, you know, thinking about how to go about this. I, I, I don't know. What, what do you all, and what do you all think? And then let's hear what Rebecca says, not a good idea or yeah, good place to start or, um, you know, I'm thinking that maybe we want to consider of the Exploring Main Street application process. It sounds easy. Sounds like something that we could do as a starter and then maybe we could, we could use some of their resources. I don't know, um, because I think it's fine to have a plan and to pursue a plan. And if in the process of your research, you come up with a better approach to something, I'd like to consider that too. So that's, that's where I am in my thinking and let's hear where you all are.
I agree with you. I, I think we, 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 you know, this is a wonderful presentation.
Yeah.
And it's a lot to absorb. And I, I think the next step is, is that we, you know, we, we sit down and, and look at this and plan through it. And I'm sure that after we, we finish this meeting, we're gonna, we're gonna have a lot more questions.
Yes, yes.
And, and, uh, you know, so then we follow up with that. But I, I think that this is, we're off to a great start here. Because the one thing that, that I'm seeing here and I'm feeling good about is, is having, having a plan instead of shotgun and all.
Yes, yes.
With, you know, it's a plan of action.
And it has, it has durability and, and it has, um, you know, I know you like contingency planning, Roy. And you've got to have a plan in order to have a follow-on plan, in order to have a succession plan, and you know what I'm saying? And I think this makes that kind of continuity over the arc of time possible. What, what would we have to do? Would we have to? Would, because one of the things where my mind is going is if we're, if we're talking about Exploring Main Street, I don't think we're going to be putting together a full-time staff and that sort of thing anytime soon. So in a locality like ours that is small, you know, what are some permutations? What have other people done to put together that kind of Main Street organization, infrastructure and yeah.
So I would say that for the.
Go, go ahead, Rebecca.
Well, for the majority of the, the communities that are in that Exploring Main Street tier, um, the, the entity that is the Exploring Main Street organization is generally speaking, the local government. Because you're exactly right. A lot of the communities at that Exploring Main Street level don't have a nonprofit. They don't have an executive director or they may have a nonprofit, but it's all volunteer. They don't have an executive director. We only require an executive director once you reach that designated nationally accredited level.
Got it, got it.
We look at your population to determine, um, whether or not we require a full-time or part-time. And at your population, we would not require a full-time director.
Yeah.
So, and you know, we can definitely look at the particulars of what that program would look like. But at this level, you, you do not need to start a whole new thing. I would say that, you know, some of the first steps are just to, to do that broader education with the, um, so sometimes we start with a, a, some network mapping. Who are those other entities that you would want to be a part of this effort? Whether those are the building owners, the business owners, your major employers, um, you know, who, whoever else, those other organizations or individuals that would be involved in this. And start having those conversations with them about, here's the Main Street program and educating them on what this might look like. Apply for Exploring Main Street. And then, um, we actually are in the process right now because we received some funding through ARPA that we are expanding our program. We are expanding our staff. And so then once you, you know, come in as an Exploring Main Street or even at any point here in the relatively near future, we can start either doing meetings like this with different stakeholder groups or coming out and doing some visioning with you and walking through that process to get to those transformation strategies and then helping you put some meat on the bones there and come up with those activities. So that's really what we would want to.
I just, I'm so thrilled.
I, I. You say that we could use ARPA funds to hire at least a part-time individual to start the Main Street program?
Um, I believe that that is a potential.
Uh huh.
I am using ARPA funds to hire some folks. And Wanda, I feel like you keep talking and then.
It seems like there are a lot of options and a lot of directions. So I'm thinking maybe May 10th, if we put that on the table to the people that are interested, what would you like to see? Because unless they're interested, it's going nowhere, you know?
Yeah.
That seems to be the place to.
Go ahead, Dawn.
That, I, I was just going to say, I think that May 10th meeting would be a good place to jumpstart this Main Street graph.
I think so too. I think so too. And I, if we could apply, I'm guessing that we could apply for the Exploring Main Street designation pretty quickly. Um, because I mean, we have, we have, as a local government, we have all of that information. And then to potentially see if we could get, whether it's Kyle or you or someone to come for that, we have a four hours set aside, uh, for economic development on Tuesday, the 10th.
So this is where I just dropped.
I don't know. Nobody's informed yet. We're gonna.
What? What, what, Wanda?
I still have questions to fill out in the contract about.
Oh.
And confirm dates and other things so that I can get this back to. And confirm dates and other things, so that I can get this back to them.
Okay. Okay, let's do that before we, we quit. I want to take advantage of Rebecca's presence and so she can go, and then let's make sure that we do that, Wanda.
Okay.
What, what, where do we find the application for the Exploring Main?
On the website.
I just dropped a link into the chat box here from our blog. And if you scroll down a little bit on that, under the training resources, there are four presentations and the heading on that is Virginia Main Street Essentials Webinar Series, The Four Points. And there are recordings as well as slide decks there. So that's something that, going deeper in each one of the four points, you all can take a look at those. If you're up late tonight, you're bored, you need something to do at three in the morning. But you can also share those with some of those partners as something that everyone can kind of look at on their own time. Um, I will say, given the proximity to the national conference, May tenth would be problematic. Our staff to be involved.
I, I can see that, I can see that.
Martha, everything is in this chat box, I can see a little number four. Do we, can you print those things off for us, or can you tell us how to get at them?
What's the stuff that's linked in the chat?
The links, yeah, yeah. I downloaded the link.
They're being recorded, I'm on my personal laptop, so, well.
If it's been recorded, then we can get at it.
Yeah, and I can also follow this up with an email with links.
Yeah.
To these things as well.
Oh, that would be helpful, Rebecca, that would be helpful. I think we're gonna have, we're going to have a lot of questions for Rebecca. And we're going to want to think about whether we still hold that May, the May tenth event idea, what it would be, I mean, there are possibilities for what it could be, not involving the Main Street staff. The other thing, the other question I have is Garth and Roy, isn't this something that would, that we would need council approval for?
The application does ask for a local resolution.
Okay.
And it's not, it's not binding. It's just asking for the resolution committing to the application essentially. And we do have some sample resolutions that we can provide as well.
Good, okay.
Mary?
So, yes.
Do you foresee council backing this?
I, I, you know, I don't know what to expect anymore, Hank.
Well, that's Bob Aston.
I think that Garth, that Garth and Roy, I, you know, I don't know.
This is good stuff.
After all, the woodwork over the kayak thing.
I know.
Different directions people wanted to go in.
I know.
We're getting that calm down.
Yeah, I've got some ideas about that, but.
Should I now come to town with my kayak? Is that what I'm?
No, you can come, good luck on finding someplace safe to launch it.
We're looking for a launch site.
Yeah.
Noted.
Yeah. So, okay, so it sounds like we have some, some work to do on the application, the resolution. The question of whether or not to save that May tenth date and do something with it, or whether we want to kick that can down the road. I think there are still some things we need to consider. And I think we should probably see if Rebecca wants to be finished for the day from a very, surely a very long workday. Anyone, I have any other questions for, for Rebecca before we thank her and say goodnight?
No, thank you so much, Rebecca, it's been very.
Rebecca, thank you so much.
Thank you, it was very nice meeting all of you, and I hope that the next time is, is in Urbana.
Could you just very, very quickly tell us who Kyle is?
Sure, so in our division, we have the program administrators. And Kyle is a program administrator and he really works the Main Street Program, I ninety-five and East in the state, so you all are in Kyle's region. We currently have one other program administrator, Zachary Whitlow, who is kind of central and south side. And we are in the process of hiring some additional staff so we can tinker with those. But Kyle is really the person who would be on the ground with you and in, in that mode with you for the most part. His supervisor right now is Courtney Neely, she's our acting program manager for Virginia Main Street. And then I supervise Courtney.
Just so you have some kind of a bigger picture of, of names and roles, so. And Rebecca, this is really very exciting, I know for me and I think for all of us. So thank you for spending your time educating us tonight and getting us enthused, appreciate it.
Absolutely, I will see you in Urbana or in Richmond.
Good. That sounds great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good night. Okay, so, Wanda, let's talk about what you need for the application and what the cost is. That's one thing that we hadn't talked about was the cost. And so that way we can see whether, whether we should commit to this now or, or what we should do.
Okay, well, I took this to the board.
Garth is gone, I, he waved, I didn't.
Yeah, he had, he had, he had to sign out, so I'm moderating now.
Okay, thanks Martha.
All right, so there were a couple of questions. I took this to the board and proposed it to them and, and they were, they were like good. And I asked about the tent, and they said, actually, we have somebody camped roll, so that day was open. So they locked it in for me until we decided, because they go pretty quickly. And so I asked them, I said, you know, because it's the town, can we do this for free? And they agreed that we could.
Wonderful.
Yes, very good, thank you.
So my question was, because I had some cross, it is definitely May tenth because on this email you sent March second, it says May eighth, which is Mother's Day, and that was.
Yeah, it, no, it is May tenth, it is May tenth, it was just a goof on my part, Wanda.
Okay, all right, so the other question is, or several, but is this gonna be like a luncheon thing? Or because we can have it anytime between, you know, like ten in the morning till ten at night, you know? But I kind of need to know, because if they can rent it at night and we're not using it or they're paying for class in the morning, it's not fair, since we're getting it for free.
Right.
To cut them out of the rental.
I think we talked about one to, one to, one to five.
Okay.
Was what we talked about. Isn't, is that, does that match your recollection, Roy?
Yes, I think it was gonna be in the afternoon.
Right, right.
All right.
This is a confer, what is the title of it?
Of what?
What, of, of this May tenth?
Oh, we haven't, we haven't decided, we haven't decided, we were, it was going to be our Economic Development Workshop.
And. Are you considering the Main Street project, you know?
Right, right.
But, okay, so I'm assuming there's not gonna be any alcohol at this.
I don't think so.
No, I don't, I was saying, I don't think that's.
Unless somebody brings their own glass.
Yeah, that's right.
Okay, and it says zero, I think that's good. Can I get Roy to sign this? He can read a copy of it, this will be your copy, it's the same thing. I just need to get it back into the club so that I can, I've got keys to the building, so I can just go in and drop it off tonight. She can pick it up tomorrow. And of course, there are things that we have to, you know, pay attention to. It's like, there's, there's no smoking in the building. The other thing we probably need to know, or you need to know, is you can only have fifty people at a time in the building.
Okay, that's good to know, so fifty people limit, okay.
And if you let me, I don't know if I'm on this Economic Development Committee, I didn't, the last meeting, I thought I wasn't. But I can go in before you come in, and I can set up, you know, like old tables and chairs. So that's done by the time you get in there. And of course, we have to leave it clean, or we have to pay somebody to clean it.
Okay, okay.
I mean, if you're not eating food, the other thing I can do is, because I've been a member for over twenty years, so I know the building by the back of my hand, I can set up a table with coffee and tea. So, you know, if somebody wants a cup of coffee or keep them awake, there's some tea, and I don't know whether you want.
Bottle of water.
Yeah, bottle of water.
Yeah, somebody. And we can, we can. I think if we did anything, anything food-wise, it might be fun to have that at the end of the event and we could migrate to one of the restaurants for that. But, you know, again, I. Pardon?
Something different will be closed that night, so that leaves with the bubbles and the half shell.
No, that's true, that's true. So, and, and again, I think, I think we still have time to figure that out. Do we need to have, our next meeting would be scheduled for April twelfth. I'm thinking, I'm thinking that we probably need to, Roy, you and I maybe do some talking and figure out, let's look at the application, let's see about whether we can get.
Maybe put the changes on yours.
An application in what we might be able to use that. We've got some things to figure out now that we're going this direction, I think is the bottom line.
Right, I think we need a meeting before April two.
I think so too.
Have an agenda, figure out who we can get for guest speakers.
I don't even, I don't even know that, I don't even know that we're gonna be, going to be going that route, Hank.
Yeah, well, that's the format of the.
I know, that's what we thought we would be doing.
People like an open house, where people want to come and go, or is it gonna be?
We, we need to, we need to figure that out, but based on kind of this new, this new approach that we've discovered that sounds like, that we want to pursue it. So, I don't know if, you know, I'm thinking that it's possible that we could do some kind of event in May that is more kind of, kind of just an idea incubator sort of thing. And to, you know, get, get, get people's ideas. We could invite business people, people from the town, people from town council. We could do, I mean, that, that I know I could.
Property owners.
Exactly.
Engage the interest and the level of commitment of the.
Right, exactly, and just, and simply use it for that. And that I could put together an agenda for us on.
Okay, that's great.
But I, I don't know, Roy, what are you thinking?
No, I think that's, first of all, I think you have to have it on, you have to have a meeting May tenth, just to get the thing going.
I think so too.
You have to do it. The last agenda item could be if we want to do this Main Street thing.
Uh huh, uh huh.
The first thing is, as you talk about it, incubator ideas of. Who ought to be involved and what different people think about it. And we can, you know, ask everybody who's there, what, what directions should we be going? I mean, do you want to try to attack the, a new Amazon warehouse here? Or do you want to, you know?
Yeah. No, I can think of, I can, I can think of ways to structure that. And that would mean that we wouldn't, we wouldn't necessarily need, we wouldn't necessarily need a speaker per se, because it would be, it would be structured so that it was, it was designed to gather participant ideas is really what it is. And then we would take those ideas and we'd synthesize them into themes and the kinds of things that people wanted. And for instance, we could make it around a theme, something like Garth identified, making Urbana a destination. And, you know, and so to have the idea generation around that. And to use it, as Roy said, as a kickoff to try to gain, to gain ideas as well as enthusiasm and interest in participating. And I think before then, I think that we can work on actually the application and seeing what council thinks of that.
Yeah, I think it should be brought up to council at the next meeting and at least presented to the council. And if everybody's aligned with it, go ahead and pass the resolution so that.
Right.
Don't have that hurdle to jump whenever we decide to submit the application.
I agree, I agree.
Like you say, it's not gonna cost us anything and it's not binding, we're not committed to anything to get in at that base level, so.
Right. Roy, what do you think?
No, I think that's, that's great, and, you know, just keeping council informed, just like we did this the last one. It doesn't have to be a whole lot, say, you know, we're putting, we're in line with our mission of looking at economic development, we're putting, we're gonna invite property owners, we're gonna invite business owners, you know, and I can think of a couple of people right now who you could invite that are business owners, who would be very interesting to have there. I mean, we could have Bill Icke.
Yeah.
Really quite a character.
Oh, yeah.
He owns a bunch of buildings, and if we talk about making him look better, he may.
Or tax product.
Right.
Oh, yes.
And he, I think, because he's a very good friend of ours, I think he may even.
Yeah, if they tax it or, or grants, and I'm sure that Bill's ears will perk up and.
I'm sure they would too.
And, you know, there's some other people, and I think that, and I don't know if this is the time to do it beforehand, but, you know, maybe we ought to be talking to Cindy's bin owner to see what he's.
We should, we should invite Cindy's bin owner.
Absolutely.
Yeah, well, anybody with a commercial property in town.
Yeah, commercial property owners.
And business owners.
Yeah, because there are.
And I think all business owners, because I think a lot of time, you know, businesses like Steve's or, you know, the, those, they get left out of a lot of the.
Right.
But they, yeah, the realtors, I mean.
Yes, you think, we would probably think primarily of retailers and restaurants. And that leaves out a whole.
That sure does, that sure does.
You know, those, they should be invited.
They contribute a lot to the.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
So it sounds like that, that we're, we're in general consensus with moving forward with doing kind of a stakeholder idea incubator event on May tenth from one to five. We're gonna have to, hopefully, we have to monitor the door, Wanda, so that we don't have more than fifty people have cycle people in and out.
Well, I think it's, it's gonna have to be RSVP, and you can put on there a limit of fifty, so please.
Well, that's right, and Alana was going to do the, well, I don't even know that we need invitations now. Because it's not going to be by invitation only, we'll have to come up with some pieces in the Sentinel. And with reaching out to the various businesses and probably, well, I guess we could actually have Alana print an invitation that we can hand give to people.
Really?
Mary, yeah. Martha?
So, on that front, just to let you know, I went ahead and purchased a one-year subscription to Green Volo today.
Oh, nice.
As I'm working on the, we sat down and figured out the times that I use that, it's.
Yes.
Do it, so I can do, we can do save the dates or whatever. But I'm actually getting ready to work with the people from Green Volo tomorrow on the best way to format the email list. I'm actually getting ready to work with the people from Green envelope tomorrow on the best way to format the email list. So maybe when I talk to him and I can send it to you and say, here, you send me the emails and this, and we can send, we can work on design and sending something out.
Okay, and that's that's electronic.
Even if it's just to save the date or whatever, just to let you know.
Yes, and I want to check with Alana because she graciously offered to do the invitations through Popetree.
Right.
And so I don't wanna step on her toes, but that's great. Okay, so.
Maybe just like, as I said, it's like a save the date.
Yeah, yeah.
Email addresses you have, just.
Right, just throwing it out there.
Speaking of Alana and her toes, has anybody talked to her about her knee replacement?
Yes, that's why she's not with us tonight. She is in some discomfort. And so so but, you know, hopefully, it's it's going well, so I'm kind of checking on her periodically.
Good.
So, question of setting it up, we have hard tables because they do Marjon and stuff like that.
Yes.
So you can get four people at a table. They have tablecloths and chairs. We have very comfortable chairs. So we could set it up so it's like that, or I have set it up for like board meetings where you have the eight-foot tables in a big rep, you know, rep angle and, you know, you're all looking at each other, but I don't.
I think what we're what we're gonna wanna do is I've done, I've done a fair amount of idea mapping and visioning conferences before. And the way I envision this is that we would have some tables, and there would be specific things to focus on at specific tables, but that there would also be stations on the walls where we would have chart pages, where people and and markers and these where people can list. Where people, lots of post-its, where people can fill out post-its and populate some question that's on the wall. So we'd need to use the walls and we need to have some tables. When would you need to know the room setup?
I was just saying we'd need easels, because we can't put anything on the wall.
Okay, then we need easels. Okay.
But we we can figure out what the tables all look like.
Yeah.
I I think that, I think if if we can have somewhat of a mix, I like the idea of the conference, whatever you.
But it's fifty people.
Yeah, like a college.
Yeah, I'm just, my thing is if we do that, my thing is if we, can we get fifty people around? Because of the size of the room, you know?
I think so. I think we're gonna have to, I think we're gonna have to think if you if you have that kind of an an up, an open you, you use that when you have people you want them all to focus on one thing with one presenter. And I'm not sure that that's what we want for this event.
Okay.
Can I break groups after, you know?
Yeah, yeah.
Speakers or or or, you know, with whatever the theme might be for that
Right.
action of the conference.
If you wanted, I could take you over there, you know, as we get closer to it, and you can look at what we have and
Okay.
The room and and we do have a full kitchen right there by.
Right, right. You know, and that's the sort of thing we may be able to get, since it's the afternoon, maybe we could get we could get sweets from, you know, or just cookies or cupcakes, or I don't know, something from from one of the local businesses. But we're we're gonna need to, we're gonna need to do that, and we're already at two hours. I know it's nine o'clock at night for you guys. I know Roy has to, he's got a drive ahead of him. So, Wanda, when do we need to decide on the room setup?
I think, you know, right on up to maybe a few days before.
Okay.
I know how, I mean, am I on the Economic Development Committee?
I don't, we don't really have an Economic Development Committee.
Oh, okay.
The planning commission is, is for now.
Yeah.
Because I thought y'all assumed it last time.
No, no.
Okay.
No, we were just looking at tasks and who was who was interested in doing which tasks toward the workshop. That's what that's what we were focusing on.
Yeah, then this is an all-inclusive activity.
Right.
Alright, yeah, cuz I mean, I would need to take, you would probably be a good, I mean, you could go, but he's probably.
Yeah.
He don't look like a decorator. Maryhausen's very nice and smart. Sure yours is, but you could, you kind of visualize what I'm trying to tell you.
Sure.
If you did the foretop, you could still see everything that's going on, you know, in the different areas. Because a lot of the people in this town are elderly and they can't stand up for four hours, you know?
Right. Well, I don't know that everybody needs to be there for four hours, you know? I think it a- again, it it might be a like a come and go kind of thing over a four-hour period of time, so that people can stop in. They can, they can engage in some of the activities, the information gathering activities. We could, we can have a someone who or some people who take turns kind of talking with people as they come in and say, here's what we're doing. Here, you know, here is, here is this. You might wanna start on table one or, you know, that kind of thing. We could have a handout to give to people to kind of orient them, but more of kind of an engagement piece to try to engage them, get their ideas. And use that then as a springboard to other things.
Yeah, yeah, cuz we'd need somebody at the door to make sure they're coming and going and not, cuz we don't want the fire marshal there.
Right, right, right. No, we we have to be careful on that.
It is a very old building, but.
It's a great building.
And then I would need them to sign in. I could probably do the door to, because because they're a five oh one C three. It helps when they have events, if people sign and say, I'm here from whatever. And then at the top, it's the Economic Development Meeting. And because it helps the IRS see that they're doing things for the community.
Right, right.
Could we also gather, gather our phone or email information on that same sign?
Yeah, yeah, oh, yeah.
I think I think we have a separate sign-up sheet
Yeah.
For phone and or email, but you know, and ask people, do you want to be kept informed on our progress?
Exactly.
Get a little piece of paper for slips for them to do that when they come in. And then they, cuz all you had to do is sign your name in their book, but you have them go ahead and fill it out and I'll just put it in a, you know, little.
Oh, I see, I see. Okay, so it's it's a book that that the association keeps.
They, you know, it goes until it's done for the year, you know?
Okay.
So do we wanna have another meeting before our next regular?
I think that would be a good thing to do. We have one on April fifth. I'll tell you, next week is far better than for me than after that, because I'm gonna be on the road driving back to Virginia. I don't know. I don't know what next week looks like, Sprey. What were you thinking, Hank?
I was thinking Tuesday to twenty-nine, if you have us.
I'm gonna be on the road is my only problem, and I'm gonna be in a different time zone, and that could be hard for me. What about, what about, let me see. Thirty is the.
We're already gonna be on the fifth, we can just have our meeting on the fifth and do it then. If we decide we need to have another meeting, we could do it later in April.
Maybe that's a good idea. And actually, our meeting would be the twelfth. It's the second Tuesday, but we could make it earlier. We could make it the fifth and then have another one on the twenty-sixth or something like that.
Fifteenth of the twenty-sixth, yeah.
Roy, what do you think?
That's that's fine. I think it's fine. Do it on, do it on the fifth. And you're gonna be available on the fifth?
Mary.
Okay, we were looking at, let's see, let me get to the right month. Yes, yes, I will be available on the fifth. Five-five, seven PM. That's of April, or four or five. Thank you, thank you. Uh-huh, and then we'll have another meeting on the twenty-sixth, four twenty-sixth at seven PM.
Sounds good.
Okay, so I will get that out to everybody to, you know, save those on their calendars. And Roy, you and I can talk. When are you available to talk?
I'm I'm around all the time.
How about Thursday? Like day after tomorrow?
That sounds fine.
What time would you like?
About two o'clock.
Your time, okay, so to your time, that sounds good. So that's ele- that's eleven Pacific time and two and two Eastern time. That'd be great. And you want me to call you, or you wanna call me when you're ready?
Why don't you call me?
Okay, Mary calls Roy. Okay, and in the meantime, I'm gonna come up with some lists of things. I'll take a look at that that application. And I'll ask Rebecca for sample resolutions. Okay?
Yeah. And when you call me, call me on my cellphone.
Got it.
If I'm not in the office.
I know. Yeah, I know, and and then that way, yeah, it's just more direct, so thank you. And other things. And in the meantime, for you all, let's think about, again, what do we need to know? Earliest, you know, on the fifth, I think we've got to get some kind of save the dates. We need to save the date in the newspaper.
We need to come up with a list.
Yeah, I know it.
Yeah.
Yep, yep, so we need to, you know, anything that you come up with, come up with, because we're gonna have to get that out. And to save the date to stakeholders. And get that out there, so, yeah.
Okay.
So we need some lists. Alright. Thank you for hanging in here tonight. I know it's a long night. I was just so excited for my conversation with Rebecca, though, that I felt like, you know, this was a an incredible resource for our town, so I'm I'm glad you share that enthusiasm. Yeah.
Well, you know, having somebody who's kind of been through this and knows the directions that are worthwhile and not worthwhile.
And resources.
Right.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, absolutely.
I noticed which are stepping stones and which are hurdles.
Right.
Yes, exactly.
Okay.
Dawn, and you've been the quietest tonight. Anything you wanna say before we say goodnight?
Not really.
Not really? Okay. Does this sound fruitful to you?
Oh, everything sounds great, yeah.
Okay, good.
You know, I think that this this meeting will be a good start for the Main Street effort.
I think so, too. Okay. Roy, I'll call you on Thursday, and we'll start putting our list together. And anybody else, send emails saying, we need this, we need to do that, we need to do the other thing, and we can start compiling them and kind of putting them into buckets, okay? So anything that crosses your mind, that'd be great.
The part about the liability, I got them away that I told them.
One quick thing, Mary, do you have, do you have a a bunch of speaker speakers lined up, or are you?
No.
Is that something that we need to be?
Well, I don't know that we need to have, I don't know that we need to have speakers. That's that's a question.
Not on this one.
I think not for this one. I think after that, what we do is we we have an event and have some of the Main Street people come.
So this is more, this will be more of a listening activity for all of those people who are coming.
This is going to be more of an input activity. It's gonna be an input activity for the people who come.
Okay.
We're wanting their ideas.
Two-way communication thing.
Yes, exactly.
In the middle peninsula that have done that.
Yes.
Anybody wants to see those.
Right.
Alright, good night. Thank you all.
Good night. Good night. Thanks, thanks, Roy. See ya, everybody. And I, Wanda, thank you. Thanks for taking care of the facility.